This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the city of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
So this is work session number three. The first one was an overview of kind of the bigger picture of what's within the proposed budget. Work session number two was the beginning of a process of going through presentations by departments. And the purpose for that this year is to spend some time trying to understand the programs, the services, and the service levels that are available. And let you hear from each of the departments about those services that they provide, and those service levels, and those services. Talk a little bit about the increase in demand for services that our departments are seeing. Talk a little bit about the resources that are available, or frankly, in most cases have not been available, to keep up with the requests or the demands of the services. And to talk a little bit about some of those service level deficiencies, or those gaps between the resources that are available for services and our ability to produce services. So we have a list of items to still continue. But there was a loose end after the first work session. I had follow-up with a council member to perhaps spend a little bit of time talking about that. And that's about the process, and the process of the budget. And so I wanted to maybe spend just a little bit of time talking about the process. At the end of the first meeting, there was some discussion about that process, and some frustration with being expressed about that. And I thought it might be good to just talk about that. So a little bit about the process, and then a little deeper dive on what it is, and where it comes from, and how it's grounded. The core to our budget process is actually grounded in state statutes. And it comes from the progressive era over 100 years ago. And that's when by state statutes in our form of government, there's a separation between the executive branch, or the executive, and the council or the legislative branch. So as the city manager, I am charged by state statute, you know, with certain duties as the executive of the organization. And part of that separation is a designation, is a separation in the budget process. It's a separation between the executive and the legislative branch. And so I'm charged by state statute with presenting a budget. And that budget has to be a balanced budget. And when, as the executive, I put that budget together, I'm looking at such things as revenues and revenue locations. I'm looking at the service demands, I'm looking at staff requests. I look at the council policies that are out there, and the direction that's been there by policy. I look at the strategic plan. And many of you know that I'm also driven by some principles related to making sure that we assure that the community is safe and functional as we try to become more meaningful and fun. And to the best of my ability, I try to align that budget also with policy direction that has been received. And a couple of examples of that, you know, in this particular budget, last spring, the council passed a policy to become, you know, energy independent and carbon neutral by 2050. And in order to do that, we have to do things. And so you'll see that, you know, in the budget, which includes the CIP, there were 127 million dollars of renewable energy projects. And that, those projects were put in the budget because of that policy direction that was provided, provided the council. On a much smaller level, there's some adjustments related to being able to do more social media. And there's a political topic, which we'll talk more about later. But it's a software product, it's an online platform, which I'm hopeful if we can work with staff, I mean, to be able to do more in community engagement. I know the community has been looking for this topic from the council. In terms of the process, so by state statute, I have to present a budget. I have to present a balanced budget. And it is a budget that, you know, again, is solely the responsibility of the manager based upon all the different, all the different factors, you know, that you outlined. If you look at our past, historically, the city manager has just presented the budget, and then there are going to be amendments or changes to that budget, which the council is fully empowered and authorized to do. My budget is simply a recommended budget, but I'm obligated to give you that recommended budget. And then as a legislative body, you have the ability to modify it and change it any way that you want, as long as it stays as a balanced budget. And so in the past, the budget was presented by the manager, and then at the end of the presentation process, which is occurring right now, the council members would make amendments to change that budget. Over the past few years, we've modified that to, in response to feedback from the council. And one was to put a pre-meeting into the budget process, where we've received some feedback and direction for higher-level policy and parameter direction. So, you know, the big tick that I was, you know, do you want to have a wage increase? Do you want a levy to the maximum amount? You know, some of those bigger items we've touched base on. And then in the amendment process, rather than just saying council members come up with your own amendments, as staff, we've said, we'll help you with those. But we'll help you with your direction. And this direction where as a council member, you say, you know, I'd like to add this, and this is the general area that I would like to, you know, to adjust or take from to make a balanced budget, we then can take that direction from you as an individual council member, and work with the staff and say, well, what would the impact of that be? And try to minimize that impact as much as we possibly can. So those are two, I guess, modifications or changes that have been made to the budget process in the last couple of years. So we're here today, we have the budget, we have the recommended budget. And we're in that process of learning about it, digesting, giving you, you know, information, providing you with feedback on it, as we come up to the amendment process, which has been outlined in the previous correspondence. I think there are amendments to do then?
Third process.
Is it 31st?
That'll be the last one, session.
Okay. So the, so that, that's a little bit about, I guess, the history of where we're at, where we've been, why we do some of the things that we do. And, you know, I recognize that at the end of that first meeting, there's some frustration that there were certain things that council members had hoped would be in the budget, and are not in the budget. But there's a lot of other things that I think other people also hoped would be in the budget and aren't in the budget. And as a manager, I'm charged with presenting that budget and do the best I can with the resources we have. And that process to learn about it, and then be able to amend it is where we're at right now. So we're learning about it, and that amendment process is coming forward. So that would be, I guess, some thoughts or perspectives on it? And I guess I'd open it up for other discussion or feedback or comments? Yeah?
So at the first budget meeting, we had put, kind of, I would say, an ask on the table about a different way of looking at how we might include some of the priorities from council members, and work with you and with Jay and others to make those possible. I'm trying to look to you to say, are you, in which direction are you leaning about that ask that we had, working with you to outline some of these options? Are you still wanting to say, it's got to be this old way that we've done it, the budget amendment process? Or do you have some, are you looking at, trying to work with us to do it a different way?
So I don't know what you mean by a different way, in the sense that...
Councilmember Emmanuel had kind of laid out a process where, you know, it was essentially less adversarial when I think of the budget amendments, but looking at how to include some of the things, whether it's firefighter, whether it's this position to do with community engagement, and how we would, you know, essentially bring those to you and ask that in a collaborative way, those changes be made.
So one of the things that I heard in the first meeting was perhaps another work session that would be dedicated just to the amendments. And certainly that is something we can do, to the extent that you want to have a work session where as a council, you're working through amendments that you might want to bring forward. We can do that. At the end of the day, again, the budget is presented, and that's what I'm obligated to do, you know, as a council. As the legislative body, again, you have the total ability to change that. But it has to be changed by a majority of the council. And so, and, you know, the most effective, I guess, process we're aware of for you to be able to have a majority of the council change it, is through an amendment process. When you're amending the recommended budget, so...
I think the question is about changing the process, though. Is, is there a way that we could do a different process where we're outlining some things that we see as priorities as council members that we would encourage to be, you know, in the final budget that shows up? I mean, at this point, we can't do that, but just, I think that's part of what the question was from councilmember Emmanuel, was, you know, a few years ago, we even changed the process to include this pre-budget session. And that was something that we did both as a council and with the city manager, city staff. So this is another ask, which is the process itself.
Again, the council, I mean, the statute requires that the manager prepares a recommended budget. And it doesn't provide, it doesn't provide for the council to prepare the budget. It requires the manager, you know, to prepare that budget. And then it provides the council to have every opportunity to change it in any way they want. And so there's a, and I think that there's been some wisdom in that. And again, that, that is, that came out of the progressive era. It came out of this idea that there should be a separation between the executive branch and the legislative branch. And it's a very clear requirement that the executive produce that recommended budget, and then, and then the legislative body, you know, takes it up and acts on it. That's, you know, very similar, I mean, you can look at different forms of government, and that's, you know, that's the way it is. So to the extent that the council indicates that there's, you know, things that they'd like to see, that happens all the time, you know, already. It happens when, I mean, there were two resolutions this past year asking me to take into consideration some things, you know, with transit. I receive, you know, ideas from council members during individual, you know, conversations and communications. And so it certainly is, you know, heard, or, but, and, and, you know, I do what I can, and other managers before me have done that also, you know, to incorporate what we can. But at the end of the day, again, I have a statutory obligation to present, you know, that, that, those are just very clearly defined in state law, that I have to present that budget, and it's not a budget that is created by the council. It's a budget that's created by the manager. And then the council has every opportunity, and you're encouraged to. And I mean, to the extent that the budget doesn't go exactly where you want it to go, you have every ability to change that, and to make amendments to it. You know, we've asked that in that amendment process, because we think it helps streamline the process. If you're able to say, you know, I'm okay with changing the quality or level of service we have in our perks because they want to do something else, we can, we can help you with that. We can say, well, here's some options, right, that we would change for the quality of our perks service. Or I'm willing to, you know, to change the level of fire service. And you can do ideas on what that would be in order to do something else. But those are the, the, because if the request is simply, city manager, find us this much money, right, to do something, I don't know what your priorities are, or where the, you know, where that balance is. And so it's incredibly helpful if you can provide some direction, at least some general area of a service or a service level or a program that you'd be interested to, you say should be changed or altered in order to do something else. And so, you know, we want, we want to work with you and help you with that. And so, and we're open to those conversations at any point, you know, during this process. And that's why we're spending the time we are right now, so that you can be informed with what are those programs? What are those services? What are those service levels? So if there's something, you know, you're willing to adjust, we can, you know, we can help you with that. And so that's a big part of why we're spending this time, so that you can be as informed as you possibly can, as you help, or, you know, as a council decide that you maybe want to have some different priorities. So I think that's, I guess, again, interesting.
Thank you. So I want to be empathetic that first budget cycle is, can be really overwhelming because we don't know what we know until you find out you don't know it. And sixth or seventh budget cycle is still a lot of information. So having that feeling is very normal. I, you know, one thing that I'm interested in, I guess I have a couple, a couple steps to my questions. I totally agree with the city manager in the sense that she or he is obligated to present a balanced budget. And clarifying question I'd have is, if we had a checklist, like, has the city manager presented a balanced budget, could we check that off to say, yep, that's happened? So...
Yep, that's happened.
Okay, cool.
That has happened.
Okay, cool. So then the next, I think the next fundamental question is, does this body want to continue using the mechanism that we have in the past, which is amendments that are formally presented on Monday nights, and then, and/or Tuesday, and voted in on a Tuesday, the same day we adopt the budget? And to me, I'll just put it out there, I find the process is, does not help to build the best product at the end of the day, and here's why. Sometimes council members can have identified money that they want to offset their amendment court. So this happened last year. We, some council members identified the same pot of money, and didn't know it because you couldn't talk to each other about it. So that's a challenge. And then at times, there seems to be a rub around offers that are made. And I don't want to, it's not, it's not fair to assume anybody's intention on that other than to say, I think it's, I think everybody could agree that there's definitely a rub that occurs. And so how do we get beyond that to a more collaborative approach? So one approach I would put on the table for consideration that I've been a part of, I've seen work successfully, is that designees of the body or the body can identify, okay, here are some key things that we really see that we would like to see included in the budget, and then ask the administrator, in our case, the manager, to then work with staff to identify, where could that go? So that's more of a staff-led conversation on, okay, this is coming, so where would we rather have this come out of? Versus on a policy side, okay, oh, I hope I'm making the right decision. And of course, everybody will adjust to whatever decision's made. But I've seen that mechanism work well, and I think it's worth us considering if we want to try that. And I think what that would look like is us coming together again, well before November, early November, which is soon, to say, you know, for instance, is there enough interest in participatory budgeting or creating a new staff position? Is that the one thing that every, six, at least six people say, yes, we definitely want this in the budget? And then to allow that time for the manager to work with staff on self-identifying where that comes from, versus the other way that it's been done? And if the body doesn't want to go a different way, that's okay. We accept it, and we continue moving on. I think we are still at a, while it's getting close to the last hour, I think there's still a little bit of time to remove ourselves from a bit of that last-hour, sometimes adversarial relationship to more of a proactive, problem-solving mode.
I think the process actually works well in the way it's intended to. We have professional managers and finance directors that listen to all the department heads and all the needs that are out there, and then they have to make decisions and come to us with a balanced budget. If that makes sense to me, there's a lot of other departments that didn't get what they wanted. So to ask us to amend it, if we have a want, and then to address and find the area maybe which is not as important to us, in a public setting, to be quite honest, I think if you're gonna, if you're gonna want to change the professionals' budget, we're a very well-run city, we're respected by everybody. If you want to change that, then you should be able to go in front of the public and say, this is what I want, and this is what I don't want, and I need six council members to support me, but this is a good idea. I don't see why that's wrong. I mean, it's what we had doing in the CIP. We found an item that we thought we could change, and we put it forth to the council members in front of the public. And I think by suggesting a process you're looking at, that you're trying to avoid, or not trying to avoid, but you potentially would avoid that, so I mean, we, the public will have input on it. So if you, if you put participatory budgeting in there, and you say, I don't want three firefighters, the public will have an opportunity on a public hearing to discuss it as well. And then we get feedback from the public, so that it's not, it's more broad-based, I think. And to me, I just feel like the process works, and I think it's fair. I think it's fair to find something that is less of a priority for you, and then present it.
I think it makes a lot of sense to be a little bit more proactive, like what Catherine's saying. And I actually think that it, you know, has the opportunity to save time, staff time. You know, if you think about what we do, we like, as a city, put in so much time to create this extremely robust and detailed document, and then we go back and like, change it. When we had that opportunity to be more proactive in including something that was going to be, going to work for everybody in the first place. And so I don't exactly know, I would like to see some changes in the budget process, but don't exactly know what those would be. Is that, how would we change, like, how would the operations of changing the budget process work? Would that happen within this, this budget process? Or would that be happening legislatively after the budget process?
So at this point, you receive your budget, we're in that educational phase, and we're coming up to that, you know, amendment process, basically. So to the extent that, you know, we've proposed, you know, a date and a process based on, you know, the way we've done it in the past, you know, at the end of the day, frankly, it is, these are your amendments. And we propose, you know, a process to it. To the extent that, you know, as I'm listening to Catherine, you know, there are two parts to, I heard two parts to your proposal. One was the, something where there's an opportunity for people to work through or share what their proposals are, you know, before having them all just kind of brought forward at once, you know, at a meeting, and then voted up or down. And, you know, we might work something with that. The other piece of that, though, was the, well, here's the idea, manager, you go find the, you know, find the money. I'll be, that is very, very challenging. And because that becomes a group that is difficult to work through. And I'll, and you threw out the example. So if you want to do participatory budgeting, and you say, to manager, you go find that money. And I say, well, that means, you know, closing a fire station. And then you go, whoa, wait a minute, I didn't mean that, go try again. And then I'll try something else, and you, no, I don't like that, try something else.
If I could just clarify a little bit, and not to kind of clarify what Catherine was saying, but just clarify what I was thinking of. I see it, I don't see it as that necessarily. I see it more like what the staff go through their processes, and what we have gone through in, sort of, in a similar process relating to, like, the goal of 100% clean energy and the trains and stuff. And so I, I'm just saying, it makes sense to put, put interest and ideas out there in the very beginning, rather than presenting the budget, and then council members being like, well, we have these ideas out in March, like, but now this is our only opportunity to share them. And so, you know, staff and council members can bring ideas to the table, and we know that we can't do all of the ideas that we want to be doing. We heard that from your presentation, but I think...
There might be just a little more of it coming up.
Oh, shucks. But I think, you know, even if we could have an opportunity to talk through some of those ideas, and even, like, give some sort of indication of a priority, like, council's priority over those, just like staff has that opportunity to do, then we can kind of have this big bucket of ideas, council and staff ideas, that all get considered as the budget, before the budget is even created. So that we can end up with something that's more comprehensive, and that is, has more forethought, and, you know, can be thought through over a course of months, rather than, you know, two weeks or four weeks in the amendment creating process.
And the other thing, and I want to touch base on what you said, is that you're asking elected leaders to make an amendment at the very last minute, which is a lot harder to do to change your budget. But what you're not remembering is that staff members all around here have made changes to a budget that we end up voting on. But when they, when there's a change to say, we're going to take someone away from the pool because we need to have an extra person staffing here, that doesn't run through the public. There's no huge news story on the front page because someone decided not to invest in a police officer, instead put it into IT. That, we all vote on that, but that doesn't get run into the news cycle. Whereas you're asking us, if we want to make a budget amendment last minute, we got to run it through the news cycle and the, and the, all the public input and everything because we want to make an amendment. Why isn't that fair?
Can I just ask, let's keep, let's keep the ideas, the commentary at the ideas, because, just to, so we're not pointing fingers at each other, just on ideas.
I thought you were pointing at Catherine, really?
I'm not pointing at her.
I have to protect you again.
I saw it, I noticed it.
You said beside Catherine.
She's a mama. She's a protector.
I think this is really helpful conversation. I never thought about, can you say more about what your image was of a work session where amendments are followed, followed by you talking, what might that be like?
Well, what that might look like, right now, there's a deadline where, so, and prior to that deadline, individual council members work with staff, and through Jay and I, to say, I'd like to make this amendment. And we work with them to make that a balanced budget based upon what priorities they'd like to share for change. And that, that, those all come together, and the council members aren't aware, really, of who's doing what, right? But they come together, they're published, and then essentially the night of, you know, the budget, then, you know, we work through this, we just go through them based on the, which first one's in goes first, right? So we just go right down them, and council works through them. And sometimes that's a relatively, you know, simple process, other times, you know, it takes a few hours. But councils kind of works their way through them. They've had the weekend to see them, and they've had, but they're all there, you know, and stated. To the extent that you want to change that deadline around, and they're all brought forward, and you want to have, you know, a work session around them where you're essentially talking about which ones you have, and how you might want to, you know, some of the, you know, the idea that multiple council members are looking at the same, you know, source of revenue for it, you know, you want to talk about that. You could put a little more time in there, because one of the critiques I heard was, well, these all come in, they're one night, and then we go, we have to grind through them all. And so maybe you want a little more time to be able to, to evaluate. So that would be a possibility, I guess, in terms of the amendment process.
I think it's really important to offer alternatives to council. And I know that that feedback has been shared over, over the years, that council would like to have alternatives, you know, okay, so we've got this idea here, and what are some alternatives to consider? to consider versus this binary of has to be this, or it has to be that? And I have seen this work. I have been the recipient of an email saying, "Thou shalt go look in your budget again, and get this information back to, you know, the person constructing the budget by such and such date, because we have these goals that, that the legislative body's trying to make." And you know what? Maybe not everything that's taken care of is like a cool process, where it's like, okay, everybody, we're all in this together, that's the thing, we are all in this together, we are proud of our community, every single person here in this room. And so, how do we move to a more deliberative, proactive, problem-solving mode versus, "Well, I don't know, I guess I'll take it from such and such place," and, "Oh, shoot, another council member's gonna take it from there," and just, it seems like we, I mean, it's clunky now, and as we keep, you know, trying to refine the process, we definitely should have this conversation earlier in the year, not in end of October. But I think that we still have an opportunity to improve the process for the final product of the outcome.
So if you, if you wanna add something to the budget, you know you wanna add it for a long time, and, and just like, just like the sustainability thing, that was approved last year as a, as a resolution that was now added in, why not bring it to the full council, so that it, that it can get added in if it's, if it's passed? I don't, I don't get that.
Well, I, I don't think that process would necessarily be ideal for everything in the budget, because we have to understand what are our parameters, and if throughout the year, we're just adding a whole bunch of things to the budget, I think it's not taking into consideration kind of the whole picture at the time. So I think it's, well, perhaps a couple times a year, I just don't think that seems like a practical thing to do throughout the year ongoing.
I could offer two things. One, although at the end of the amendment process, it may seem binary, when we, when a council member says, "Hey, I'd like to add this, and I'm kind of interested in taking it from this area," and it can be very broad, I mean, but at least tell us kind of what department or what, you know, general service, we will come back with options, you know, it won't be just one. I mean, we'll say, you know, we could, you know, if it was parks maintenance, you know, we could, we could get you where you wanna go, if the grass is mowed at four inches instead of three, or if we don't water this, you know, we'll give you several. So it's not, it might seem binary when it gets to the end, but when we work with the individual council member, it won't be. The other, I guess, bigger picture issue is, again, I can't overemphasize that statutory delineation and distinction between the executive and the legislative. And it's in-state law, it, again, it came out of the, you know, the progressive era to have that distinct separation, and so to say that, that, you know, that the legislative body starts to insert itself into the development of the budget is crossing that, that, that boundary that is established by state law, and that, that boundary between what is the role of the executive, and what is the role of the legislative body. And again, as, as your executive, I work really hard to put my ear to the ground in listening, you know, what you, you know, what was important, and where your priorities are, and I do what I can with it. But that's different than having the legislative process actually developing and working side, but as much as it might feel nice, you know, to have that, you know, that, or sound nice in that process, it does cross that barrier or boundary that's there in-state law that separates the executive from the legislative.
I think that between Catherine and Dave, there is a distinction there that speaks to that division between the executive and the legislative, and that you said that you responded to the direction of council in the energy saving, and that, and that was a clear direction that was moving on.
It's a policy, it was a policy direction.
And all of a sudden, everybody begins to pull into that. But these other things that, that have not been, we've done, we've not passed any resolutions about participatory amendments, or that, that allow that clear direction to move into staffing patterns, or I can begin to see how that's different. Kind of just going over your shoulder and saying, "You know, no, not good." So, so I, I'm starting to get that differentiation, that if we can create legislation that moves the direction, and therefore the budget, that's, that's our forefront. The last-minute stuff are just shifts, those are just saying, "Hi." And then I'd like to say one other, so this is really clear for today. The other thing is, I just can't help but wonder if there was more abundance, this conversation would be very different. I mean, if we felt like there was discretionary money anywhere, you know, everybody wouldn't feel like, you know, that much.
As I've mentioned to several of you, that, you know, if there had been more resources, I mean, the idea of community engagement and neighborhoods, I mean, there's a whole series of things that I would like to be able to do to put into the budget that would have, you know, moved more towards some of the things I know, you know, that there's interest there from, from the council, and we were, you know, you know, the fact that this was a, you know, a budget that, that didn't add much was actually a real positive to us, because it was one of the few budgets in recent times where we weren't actually cutting. And so I recognize there's that tension, and there's that, that desire to wanna do things, that at the same time, we're in an environment where we feel just grateful when we didn't have to cut. And so, to your point, that, you know, if there were more resources, I think this inherent tension, there would be lots of it. Because in my recommended budget, I'd have more resources to be able to move towards, you know, more new things, versus just maintaining what we have to stay safe and functional, and keep up with the service demands that are there with a growing community, when the resources aren't keeping up with just that basic service level to, to take care of, of a growing community.
Can I ask a follow-up question? So I'm imagining that this is about participatory government, and things that we might try. Is it possible, well, I'm thinking at any point during the year, we could look for grants that would allow us to do a long-year, two-year, three-year trial on something like that?
Yeah.
So maybe that gets part, part of the one?
Just, you know, just one other thing, I want people saying, comes from Chris, is that, you know, I think one of the things, I don't, I don't know if you sat through the follow-up conversation with Rebecca, sorry?
Rebecca Ryan.
Rebecca Ryan, about, about the strategic planning process, but one of the things that we talked about was, was again, roles, and we talked about the council as a, as a policy body, focusing on the why, the kind of the big picture, the why, the policy, and the, and the what, and establishing those broad levels. And so, going back to your example, the, of the sustainability measures, council established a policy and a goal to meet this, and then the city manager, as the executive, then works under that policy guidance to say, you know, it starts working towards that. And it doesn't specify how to get there, it specifies the overall goal. And I think that the same thing, you know, can be said around the whole issue of community engagement, is that, you know, it might be a policy of the council to say, "Hey, you know what? Community engagement is really important to us," or involving citizens in the budgeting process is really important to us. When you start getting down to participatory budgeting, that gets in into the how, because that's a very specific process for involving citizens in the budget process. And there are pretty many other ways to involve them in the budget process, some of which may be less expensive than that. But again, that starts getting, I think, into the role of the, of the manager to start developing those solutions within that broad policy guidance.
So I, I hear what you're saying, Neil, about the separation, and it's compelling, and along kind of the same lines of Jill was saying, of, you know, the difference between policy change and changing a line, like influencing a line item within a budget. But I don't see the difference between making an amendment at the very last minute on the budget, and making those, the exact same changes that we might be making at the beginning of the process, when we can get full buy-in from all the council members, and staff, and yourself, Neil, and I think that, you know, I just don't see the difference, like, the outcome is the same. And so, that's kind of why, where I'm struggling, and I also see, I do see what we're doing now as more adversarial, particularly between staff and council members, and I think that having that opportunity to work together, to potentially create the same thing as if we were doing it within this process now, could, could make council members be able to reconcile with the fact that we can't have everything earlier on, and similarly with, with staff, you know, this is, you know, reconcile the, the values that is being, that are being set by the council, and so.
So the, perhaps to clarify, the, again, the statutory requirement is that the executive has to provide the, you know, the balanced recommended budget, and that, that is solely the responsibility of the, of the executive, and so, I, you know, I do that, it's there. To the extent that, that you feel that the amendment process is adversarial, I feel badly if you feel that way, because it's, you know, it, it is your budget to adopt, and it's your budget to, and my role is to bring it forward and to, and to present it to you, and then, and then also to work with you, right, to the extent that you want to change it. And so, if you felt that's adversarial, again, I feel badly about that, and we can try to work on that part of it. And, you know, part of that, part of that change that we did, where, you know, before, it really had been a council member out of the blue, would just grab this to say, "I'm gonna reduce this and increase that," and we said, "Well, maybe we can work together more on that." And so, if you can tell us a little more about where you might want to, where your priority is, we can help you with that, and give you options, because options are important. And, and, you know, and that absolutely becomes a policy call of the council that we support. And I, and I want you to know that when you make those amendments, we support them, and they are what, what is the direction of the council, and we go forward, you know, with whatever those amendments are. So, you know, we wanna help you develop the amendment, but it, but it is an amendment that, and it's a change to the, and again, this is that, that process thing, it's a change that a majority of the council has to make to the, to the recommended budget of the manager, and that's that delineation, and that separate, you know, separation of responsibilities and of duties. We'll help you in every way we can to, and certainly, you know, and wanna be supportive of whatever that, those amendments are, and certainly don't want that to be an adversarial thing. But the process calls for, you know, that, that the amendment, you know, is, I mean, that the recommended budget is changed by a majority of the council, and the council's tool for doing that legislative tool is an amendment process, you know, after you've received the budget, and after you've heard your, you know, and been informed, and we answer every question we can, and you walk away knowing so much more about what we do and how we do it. Because it is, it's an, it's an important document, and it's an important process, I think, for you to learn about what we do and how we do it, and how, and how those resources are spent, how they're used. You're setting this policy direction, this is the opportunity to say, "Well, how does that policy turn itself into, into action?" Things on the ground, but actually, you know, we're talking earlier about clean water and, you know, cleaning up sewage, you know, so it's, it's an opportunity, without doing tours of the waste fire if you wanna plan a lunch, to, you know, to learn about what we do and how we do it. So, really, we want, we wanna work with you on the amendment process. If you, if you, if all of you want more time to see the amendments that you're each proposing, and work through them in a different way than the Monday night, we can work with that. But it's still, at its core, it's the council deciding, as a majority, to change the recommended budget that was presented by the executive.
I, to clarify to you, I, I think that the process is inherently adversarial, but I do think that as much as you can, the staff does do the job to keep it less, as little adversarial.
Well, what I can tell you is, even though it's my recommended budget, it's simply my recommended budget, trying to match up wherever, and if the council wants to realign that, I hope you know how much I respect that process and the decisions that the council make to modify it.
Any way you want.
But I have the obligation of giving you it, and then you have, you have the obligation and the duty to change it if you want, you know, by a majority of your, of your body. Well, there we are. Forty-five minutes. Good discussion, you know, it's a good and healthy discussion to have, and if there was that tension out there, I mean, I think it's, it's good to talk about it.
I just wanna make one suggestion, if people are open to it, I really like if we could have another sort of work session, kind of like the idea that's been floating around, where we do talk a little bit about, in a public, open setting, about the amendments that people are hoping to see, because I feel like we don't want to be duplicating work, or anything like that, it would be really good to have an opportunity to just go over that together.
We, if that's, if that's the direction you wanna go, give us a chance to look at calendars and due dates and things like that, and we can, you know, we can, we can put together a process where the, where the amendments are due at a certain time, and then there's a work session where you can talk about the amendments, rather than, you know, piling them all up that, that night before.
Or when I was here in Emily, was, did you wanna have a conversation before the amendments are due, is just so you-
Yeah, I think that might actually be helpful, because then, if, you know, two people have the same idea, they're not each trying to figure it out, so that, and then maybe if there's a, if there's a small number of things that are, that a lot of people are interested in, I will just make the simple process, I don't know.
I think the other thing that could happen too, is, you know, one of the things that we also ask you to do is, who's your second? If there's this conversation beforehand, you could, y'all could figure some of that out, you know, in the, just get that, you don't have to make those phone calls.
Multiple co-sponsors.
Yeah, could be that, could be that too.
So, this idea of multiple co-sponsors, I guess, we should probably get that clarified.
I was gonna say, it's just me.
Probably get that clarified.
Any gap to look for me.
Yeah. As far as, as far as, so I, I think this is super helpful, because what this is doing is opening up lines of communication in the public, and that's what we have to do. I'm wondering about if it could be noticed in a way that, I, we, obviously, we're not putting final budget action at the meeting, but there might be some direction that's given, you know, depending on the conversation. So, to make sure that it's noticed in a way where we're able to work as a body to give some direction, if we choose to do it, versus, shoot, it's only been noticed as a discussion, and we can't give any direction.
I don't like that idea at all. I just, I hate that we need to have a consensus, and you don't go in front of the public. That's what you're trying to avoid here.
It is in front of the public.
It's in the vote.
Excuse me, excuse me, you're saying that about me that I'm trying to avoid, and I ask you to please take that back.
That's the way I heard it.
But that's about me, let's talk about the policy, not about what my intentions are. Let's talk about the policy, and the mayor's.
I think we should go in front of the council if we're gonna vote, and I don't like consensus in a, in a work session.
So I think a public, you know, this meeting is in front of the public.
Well, I can, I can tell you that what you say here will be in the paper if it's news ready. So it's, you know, this notice, how do you, you can, it's, yeah, there's, you, you don't have to go, all you have to do is just discuss issues, and, and it becomes, as it should be, I mean, as it should be, that's why this is a-
It doesn't have, you don't have a public hearing there, right? You don't have a public hearing in here on a, on a budget change?
We have had, we have had in the past, public, public, public conference-
I'm just saying that, I mean, we certainly can talk about things here, it is a public meeting, it will be available in the press, and people can be sitting here and say, "Just talk." So if you, if you want it to be noticed, you know, like, there's gonna be significant conversation with budget, I'm sure somebody will be on it. So I, I do agree that we don't wanna be voting here, but this is certainly information that the public has access to.
Is, is that what you were talking about? Is that what you were talking about? Where, I guess what I thought I heard you say is that we publicly notice so that we could all agree and then give staff direction to change the budget before it comes to council. So we didn't have to put these amendments in.
No. What I'm saying is that if an idea comes out and there's enough people that go, that's got some teeth to it, let's, let's please work on that. It would come then back in the form of a budget amendment. And the left and the right hand and the left foot and the right foot would all know what direction we're headed in versus only sharing an idea and we can't have a discussion about it.
We'd still vote, we'd vote on a one to none, you know, I mean.
No, I think.
It'd be on the council floor.
Vote on the budget on the council floor. Go ahead, Joe.
So, and Steve had asked me to weigh in here, but what I think I'm hearing is it would be a discussion about amendments and we all talk about the amendments and that you're not going to vote on amendments and you're not going to provide a specific direction. But you say, well, I was thinking about bringing this amendment forward and somebody else says I'm thinking about bringing this amendment forward. And each of you may change that coming out of the work session to, you know, what you bring forward based upon the conversation that you have in the work session.
And that would be in front of the public, I mean, the public has access to that information.
Steve, do you have any?
Yeah, I think if it takes that form and only that form, that works. You know, that's, that's in essence getting together and doing a work session work, sharing information.
On amendments.
Right. But the key distinction that then I heard and asked about, Council on Prostrable and the Council on Well, is that they would then be voted on at your budget adoption meeting. And that is a statutory requirement that is preceded by a hearing. So, but that needs to happen before you can actually take legislative action. But you can get together as long as you're noticed and write presses here and talk about budget amendments and that's, and it's post-manager introduction, fulfilling his executive role to introduce a proposed budget, that, that you can work out and that's just, that's just fine.
And if that's something you'd like to try, we gotta sit down and look at some dates, but we'll send you out something as soon as we can that would say, here's a, here's a proposed way of, so there'd be some deadlines then for your amendments. Because you still have, you still have to go through the process of saying what you want for your amendments and what you're, you know, and that, that way you, you know, if they're all brought together at a work session instead of that, you know, the Monday night and published, that's how you will learn that, well, three of you are thinking about using the same source of money. And then you can have that discussion about that. Is that something you'd like us to try to do?
Yeah.
Right? All right? We can do that.
What's that?
I don't think I can use that, but I can.
Yeah, because I, I mean, I think, I don't know why it's going to have to be next week.
Yeah.
Because, because then we've got a work session the following week and an amendment. And then, you know, we've got to get amendments drafted and everything to go out of the pack, go off the packet for the adoption on that first meeting in November. So.
We'll take a look at, we'll let you know. But, you know, if I, if I, taking things up a little bit. Yeah, yeah, there you go.
I was just thinking the same thing. There's another statutory thing we have to do and we got to get at least five or six of you there on Monday.
Right, right. Please, I'm leaving at that point.
Okay, I'll come.
Okay.
I heard you're leaving. No, I didn't.
All right.
Monday morning, Ms. Rawl.
Monday morning? Kathy?
I'll be there.
Kathy's there all Monday morning.
I heard you. Monday morning? Monday morning.
Take it.
Me too.
All right. Well, thank you, thank you for the, for the presentation and the discussion and dialogue. So let's, let's move forward then. We have, how much time do you guys want to spend at this tonight? We do have another work session next week. So I mean, I think we acknowledge we're probably not going to, because we, yeah, next week on Tuesday. So we're coming up on an hour. We, we have in front of you the schedule of the departments, just the ones to talk about, we tried for half an hour.
I see your wish list.
Sure.
How long would you stay?
What's that?
How long would you stay? How long would you stay? Are you late?
No.
She's straightening up this paper.
Nope.
Stay another half hour.
I bailed out on all my Tuesday commitments just to be here with all of you. So here I am, I'm here as long as you want to be here.
The guy likes coffee.
That's right, and I are next to each other for the whole evening.
So why don't we?
We probably have to get, we probably have to hear. Well, skip, skip these two.
Let's, let's, Jeff, you just drew the short straw. I think. All right. What we're going to try to do is Dave, we'll do, we'll do you as engineering, we'll do Steve as attorney, they're relatively smaller. And then, like right now.
So we'll do engineering and parking then.
Engineering is page one of your, of your handout.
So I'll just go through it quickly. We don't have a lot of change in engineering from last year to this year, to next year. But yearly, the bread and butter of what we do, we provide redesign and then construct fifty projects yearly between street and utility projects and the alley improvement program which came online three plus years ago. We review eighty-plus site plans, plots and developments yearly. We have a one brand card that offer the site plans coming in. We'll mesh with city infrastructure, are compliant with our stormwater regulations. And then coming out of that, we also administer twenty-plus development agreements yearly. They're not the exotic, complex development agreements that the city attorney typically has for having a big development coming in. These are the development agreements for subdivisions and businesses when they're building infrastructure that will be joining the rest of the city's infrastructure on the public side after it's done. There are certain requirements that developers are required to do from construction materials to detour roads, keeping, keeping street routes open to traffic. And then the post Jeff's crews, post-construction might inspect them before we approve those to enter the city's utilities. So we administer that, watch through the letter of credit with our finance department and then keep all of the development that ultimately ends up being in the city's inventory compliant with our city specs and what we would expect out of the city project. We run the city's GAS program. A new change in 2017 that has really taken hold this year was we have, we, instead of doing horizontal construction, which is typically street construction utilities, we're trying to handle and help out with the vertical construction. So for a good example, remodeling the city hall currently underway. We're not architects, but we are good at project management. So we hire architects and what our, what our charter has been given to us is if we have a building project that requires multiple quotes or bids from, from contractors or vendors, then we will try to get the plans and specs together in engineering. If it's a maintenance site project, if a HVAC system goes down, if there's a pump that goes out and we have to call somebody in, you know, a plumber, a systems mechanic to come in and fix that, then Jeff's crews with community development or community services handle those. So the bid, the bid project that we have going on the city halls represented that. Fire station will help the fire department out with the contract that was approved earlier. Brad Bone still helps with that, work with the internal customers where they need and we try to help get the plans together for that. We maintain the traffic signals on the city routes. We don't read them on the, on the state routes like Claremont Avenue, Highway thirty-seven North Crossing, but Hastings Way, downtown, Farwell Street, those are all city traffic signals, Lake Street. We document all the pavement condition on our streets.
Dave, tell them about your controlled signals or the cameras.
Well, a part of that with our newer, newer poles, if it's a really big pole, typically one of the big ugly ones, those are the, the, those are our new system. We have a Centrac system, so there's cameras on there. And it helps with bicycle pedestrians issues, it helps with law enforcement, it helps with efficiency. In the past, we used to have, we used to have electrical wires that would be on pavement that would pick up on a, on a change of magnetic feedback in there. Now we have a camera that will detect movement in there. So, you know, in the past, if you pull in a bike box with a, or into that area with a bicycle or motorcycle, it wouldn't activate the signals. But what we can do with that is, like when we have events in downtown, Leah, Leah Mas administers that. She could set the signals, we know where there's going to be an event Friday night. She can, and all the signals that have been upgraded, and we have a capital budget to upgrade our signals slowly and steadily year after year, we can program the signals to go out of downtown till a little extra green leaving downtown from nine-thirty until ten o'clock if we know an event's going to be out at nine, nine-thirty. One thing that we're working with transit on, it isn't, it isn't, hasn't been brought on mind, but it's been studied, is buses can have, can work with our signals and they can extend or hold the signal. So if there's a bus going up Farwell Street, we're going to go to Washington and it's supposed to turn red, you know, the bus is ten seconds away, it'll hold that green open so that bus will go around and keep them on, on the system. So it, it has a capability for minor tweaking of our, of our infrastructure with, you know, some of the intelligent features that they have if they do traffic calls for us, if there's something going on. Yeah, Brackett and Hastings is the chief of Fender Hards. Leah from home can dial up, she can look and see what's going on, she can reset it, tweak it remotely. And it also helps our electrician go out there. So.
We also use them with emergency management. After a bad storm in the middle of the night, we can scan those and look at them. And if that camera's looking in the gutter and we're not on at all, we probably know there's a problem there and it can send out resources.
Get your camera out of the gutter.
Yeah, get it out of the gutter.
So there, there, there's something that you don't pay a lot of attention to and a lot of people don't notice it, but it is something that makes our system more efficient. And we're adding to that as we go by.
How many of them do you have?
Well, we, our total system we have over thirty six in half city. And I think we're approaching twenty that have Centrac in them, like Water Street, Summit, or Water Street first doesn't have it yet, Summit, Water Street doesn't. Although we're slowly working through it. If you see the camera on top, that's what that's, that's what that's for.
Because of the attention of bicyclists.
Yeah. It's a big difference when you want to intersection on a bike.
Especially the Washington, Farwell one.
And I use several times a day.
Yeah, they're, they're very powerful. Our pavement condition index, it helps us monitor and guide our CIP program by doing pavement documentation of our streets. We're trying to expand it to all of our parking lots, so all of our parking infrastructure and also our trails so we can make, gain the driven decision on what routes to place where in the CIP to make the most effective use of the money. What we have, we've gone from every, a road being gone, gone every three years to we've been able to get our materials every two years with the pavement condition. And then we want to get the local streets every two years. So every year we want to have our technicians, and they go and they pick representative samples and they measure every crack, they take pictures, they, typically in the spring, in April and May, before construction kicks off, we have our technicians out doing that. We administer the parking program from, you know, everything parking related, pretty much with the exception of enforcement, but we work with our CSO partners and the police department for, where we have parking regulations to see what enforcement demands that places on the system. We don't get heavily involved with the alternate side parking that we have for snow emergencies. But all of the other parking, whether it's a ramp, a parking lot, dump, two-hour parking, parking in a school zones, all of that, we work with the stakeholders to see if there's changes that need to be enacted to make the run more efficiently or meet customer expectations or if there's safety concerns that come out. Recent one was Farwell Street was a safety concern last year, the year before, coming out of the third ward. We had a restriction on one side to make it more consistent with more of the gateway and out of the third ward. And then just helping with, most recent one is the Capitol Center and Grammy Avenue opening, how do we, would change the parking to be more efficient and the change of customer needs in and around town, major drive downtown. Another thing we, we monitor is the right-of-way encroachment program. So we come to the council fairly regularly if there's a permanent encouragement with sculpture tour, Chiller's Museum, whatnot. If there's a feature, like there's a business on Grammy Avenue that had a vault that was under our sidewalk, and we work with property owners to see if there's a safety concern or not. If there's not a safety concern, then we help document and present that to the council for consideration for encroachment. As well as we issue street opening permits and track when, primarily when utilities or public, or private utility partners with electrical power communications are in our streets, they come and get a permit, we document that so we know what street has been opened. We can monitor the, the policy that was enacted, where we won't allow people unless there's an emergency or a safety concern to enter a street five years, within five years after it's been reconstructed. But we do that so if we get a call from Eddie Lane, that there's a patch on Eddie Lane and it was never fixed and it's been there for two years, and then we, you know, first thing we do is we look through our, our right-of-way permits and we'll see, oh yeah, you know, XL Energy was in there in May of two thousand sixteen. And then we'll follow up on them to make sure that they fix it. So that's a, that's a fairly time and labor intensive program, but it is one that is essential with that. For, for, just a graph, generally we have, some years we have more projects that cost less, some years we have fewer projects that cost more. But from two thousand and nine, as our finance director would probably point out, to twenty seventeen, we've just like doubled what we're spending on our capital expenditures.
Expenditures.
Is that where you started?
There's some correlation there.
I was there, right? That's just dip right here.
Yeah.
So the first, the first rise wasn't completely me, but I have contributed in the second rise. And this, this is partially, this isn't adjusted for inflation, so some of that's inflationary. But as we spend more money with our water system, with the, with pavements, with parking, parking lots and so forth, that all takes money, whether there's a lot of projects that don't have a high dollar amount to it or a fewer number of projects, like Grammy Avenue is, is a very expensive project because there's a lot going on with it. It just shows how the, you know, some of the capital demands, just for the, the engineering part of our shop is coming online. But as Dell and Toll redevelops, our parking becomes, our parking program and our encroachments and traffic signals add a lot to it, in particular with parking, trying to make sure that our parking, we don't have a parking utility, but we try to operate it like a utility where we're.
You had to say that.
Well, but I mean, we treat it like a program, so we have our wave money for it, we're trying to make it fun.
I know you got a big P out there.
We have, we got the big P up on the, on the parking ramp. We're, we're trying to make the overall.
Hey, city much anticipated its big P and finally came.
We're getting our branding out there. Leah has our parking assets in Google Maps and we're trying to, trying to make it more user-friendly because we are going to have more people coming to downtown. It used to be the library was the largest draw, I believe the library still is the largest draw, but now we have other complimentary heavy draws that will be coming online. And we want the parking to be seen as a, as an asset instead of, you know, something that's growing a lot. So that just illustrates how our, you know, some of the demands are growing from when downtown in particular is kind of sleepy to what it's becoming currently. As far as what, service level deficiencies, just putting out the PCI, the pavement condition. We have a waters, we had a water study done in twenty fourteen and we got a citywide water model. So we have a, we have all of the major water distribution system, the pipes and models. So we know generally, you know, what the pressure is there, what happens if you have a big draw on it, what, where some of the deficiencies are that we should be looking at upgrading. We don't have that for our sanitary and for our stormwater. So, but what we do is when we have a change in an area, we model it. So we have a number of smaller models and we're more reactionary. So we have a number of smaller models and we're more reactionary when we've got to create those, instead of having something that, you know, when you have Mills Creek Farm come in, you have a big, um, you plug it in, you see what it, see what it does to our stormwater model that goes across ninety-three. We modeled that when it came online, um, but it takes more time to be reactionary than it does if you have a thought out of modeling in advance, um, and you plug it in. And then one thing with attendance and public involvement requests, uh, we get a lot of requests from neighborhoods, business improvement groups, uh, business improvement in the districts. What we do has a big impact on people, whether it's a personal residence or business, or how they conduct their business, or how, how people visit their businesses afterwards. So the last thing that we want to do, and we, and we put a lot of effort in to fully engage with the stakeholders on our projects to the extent that we can. So when we bring any projects with the city council, there isn't, um, hasn't been a lot of thought that goes into it. Uh, we may not necessarily agree, the two-hour parking, we didn't agree with everybody on that, we, uh, we differed with, but at least we presented it, we have, um, we have a very transparent recap of the issues, what pros and cons are, what our recommendations are, so that when it gets to the council, it's a very professional, um, discussion, um, and it's one that you can make more of a data-driven and feedback-driven decision. That's something that as more of these come up, uh, then we get stretched, then also with more of the projects having more input and, and I think it is a good thing to have because, um, just to, you know, we try to treat people as we would want somebody to do in the street front of our house and, um, that, that's one that does take a lot of effort on our part to try and make sure that, um, everything is fully vetted before it gets to the city council for that, so. Um, then we have, we have requests that come on, you know, so delays, this week we've had requests to do intersection evaluations for two intersections, uh, typically very time-consuming. So, um, those are just, I think we're able to conduct them, but we're not able to jump on all of our service requests, whether it be parking, speed zones, intersection evaluation, and have an answer back in two weeks to a month, and maybe a year, a year and a half in some instances, and we try to prioritize those based on safety, based upon construction projects that we have to present to the city council in January, so they move up on a list for now, as opposed to something that we don't have a construction project for and we would look to include it in future hours, so. I think that's...
How many employees?
We have eighteen employees in engineering, we, there's one in parking. Those are the permit employees, uh, and then we hire for seasonal surveys, uh, that go from March until, uh, October, generally speaking, so. All of the, all of the fifty projects that are typically CIP-driven, that are our street projects, are administered primarily by three, uh, engineering technicians and then two of our design engineers and one of our deputy city engineers, uh, will go out partial days, during the construction season, and our technicians are out completely. So our technicians, they work a lot of long hours and our survey crews, we have three survey crews that go around for all fifty projects. It's not uncommon to have a fourth to a third of those projects going on at the same time. We may have water main going out here, sanitary sewer here, paving over there, concrete...
And a little thing like City Hall remodel.
And then, then on top of it, we have with City Hall and, and with, big thing, uh, you know, and that's just gearing up now with gradual install.
So, any questions for Dave?
I'll just say, I've noticed the signs, uh, them, put them out there. I do notice them, like, oh, that's helpful.
So that's the one thing we wanted to try to get, if people are coming down for the Grand Ole, the Pablo Center, that you drive up Farwell Street and they can clearly see that we have parking on both sides instead of, you know, where we park them, so.
I will add one question. It's just, I'm wondering, you know, with all the disasters across the country and, and just the weird weather that we're having, that is competition for materials, if we have trouble, I'm, I'm just wondering how you guys view it?
Um, for our construction, with the construction crews, um, our, the, the valleys construction crews are very busy this year. We've had a, we had a horrible September, uh, we had a horrible April. All of our street construction projects, a lot of it isn't temperature-dependent, but when we get to the end, uh, we'd rather have bad weather in July and August than in September and October, uh, because concrete and asphalt is temperature and moisture-dependent and they're the last parts that go on. An example of how busy our contractors were, we bid Lake Street and Grand Avenue and we wanted to try and get those done this year as well. We bid those later in the year, Grand Avenue was bid earlier in the year, and then the bid prices for Lake and Grand Avenue were at least fifty to sixty percent higher than they were on Graham Avenue, uh, because we wanted to get that finished this year and crews, you know, finding concrete crews to come in and do the work, you know, they're working in Chipwell, they're working in Stanley, they're working in Fork, and after the recession went through, everything slowed down and the work has started to come back, the contractors really did expand. So it's not like we've had a proliferation of all these smaller firms out there. It's still around the same number and it's particularly indicative of bridge builders and all of the bridges that are being built now in the interstate over in Todd County and in the southeast part of the state with mega projects, a ton of local bridge builders went, you know, went out of business or retired, were, were gobbled up. So our, our bridge prices then paid for, like the Grand Avenue pedestrian bridge and it adds, it makes it hyperinflation, which is, you know, some likely showing on there. They're, they're very busy. It makes it more important for us on our end to try and get the projects bid earlier in the year, um, in March, April timeframe, instead of waiting until the summer, so we can be on the first list and we're, when they're trying to fill out their plates instead of when their plates are full.
Anything else for Dave? Okay, thanks. Steve?
Thank you. The city attorney's office represents the city of Eau Claire and very broadly speaking, represents, supports the councils and advises, you know, all aspects of it, so the city council, our boards, our commissions, uh, redevelopment authority, uh, you know, all levels of, uh, public officials and then, uh, our, our staff, the city management department heads and employees. And so we are involved with, uh, in some element, uh, everything that the entire organization is doing. So, uh, it's not that our office does all those things, there's no way we could, it's the smallest department in the city, but as the city, uh, becomes more of an active city, and I would say we are very much that and have been for a long period of, of time now, but as we are an active city that Dave was just talking about, is building more things and doing more things at those new places and more and more as we've gone through a transition within, uh, our city, we're doing all those new things, uh, more often with new people or new public officials. All those things drive, you know, our workload. So, uh, what we have seen in the last year and I've certainly seen as a trend over, over my time with the city is all those things are accelerating, they're all excellent, they're almost all excellent, uh, things, uh, they come with being a more active community, uh, but, uh, they drive issues. So whether it is, uh, the fact that we negotiate agreements or draft to agreements, those sort of public-private partnerships that we do are wonderful. We enjoy doing them, uh, for the city and, uh, uh, but, uh, they all require relationships and then they require, the whole point of drafting a, a good agreement is to try to define that relationship, uh, to avoid future problems. So, uh, while it's, you know, wonderful working, you know, Jeff, you know, his predecessor, you know, Phil, and, uh, on all the new projects that we've been able to do, say in the parks with public-private partnerships, those take more time. Frankly, it's simpler, it's much quicker, uh, to fund them ourselves. That's not the fiscal reality we're in as you continue to hear through this project, out of this process. So, uh, we have gotten them done, we've gotten them done to the point that, uh, Vanessa Stromberg and I, uh, one of the other attorneys in our office, uh, were asked to speak at a, at a state conference, uh, for, for parks and rec, for how many we've done and how successful we've been on that. We're all, we enjoy partnering, uh, with, uh, with Jeff and his whole staff on those sort of, and that's just one element of it. So, uh, certainly, uh, some of the most visible would be our development agreements downtown, starting, you know, way back in oh-two, uh, with the RCU agreement, I won't now list them all, but, you know, uh, but each and every one of those is extremely time-intensive and the more of those we do, again, has transformed the nature of our downtown. But, uh, they all involve a lot of work, not only to draft them and then, uh, to ensure that, uh, from at least a legal perspective, that they move forward, uh, in, in a, in a proper lawful manner. So we're seeing, uh, as I gave in my chart, at least, uh, some background going back to thirteen, but you can see a, a huge acceleration even from thirteen moving up to seventeen in the number of, uh, those sort of public-private partnership projects and agreements. And again, that starts from a baseline as far back as I could go, uh, at least fairly easily, uh, when we implemented an electronic, um, uh, project management, file management system that we have in place in our office. But really, you know, that, that has been moving forward for at least a decade prior to that. So, you know, that, that's moving on an upward trajectory. Uh, training is a big part of, uh, what we do. Going back to, uh, to the early, uh, years that I've been here, you know, we picked up internal training, uh, with law enforcement and so we're very pleased to partner with Eau Claire PD every year on, on internal training they do, uh, to try to get them ahead of, you know, what's one of our, you know, most important functions and it's, is a very highly, uh, uh, rights-based, uh, you know, impactful issue for our citizens and also a fairly, fairly high litigation and risk issue for the city. So, uh, you know, we're very pleased to do that, uh, but that's something that, that we've added on and we try to do the same thing, whether it's with report writing with, uh, with fire or with our code enforcement officers or, uh, with all the new, uh, people that we have throughout our organization, uh, as we've seen transition internally. And so all those people, you know, we're hiring good people, but they're new to their positions, they might have done it somewhere else, uh, but maybe they did it in a different state. Now we've got, uh, to do training in those areas to bring, uh, you know, all those folks up to speed, uh, in this area. You know, the other one, uh, that I would, I would bring to your attention is just new initiatives, so more something on, on the public official side. So we're eager to work on those new issues. We enjoy, uh, you know, working, uh, on things that, that you're coming up with, but that again drives time. And so while I didn't add this, you know, I, I know that we have seen an acceleration in those sort of, uh, new initiatives, uh, just within this last year, but even going back before that, as you're dealing with new issues, you have to create new policies, you have, you know, uh, and all those types of drafting issues are, are things that, that tend to bump into our office and, uh, drive our workload. And then, uh, going to the other chart I, I, I listed is, is litigation or hearings. And so, you know, one analogy, and I'm not the first one by any means to use this, so you've probably heard it, but, uh, it, I think sort of is apt with litigation is, you know, you go out in a nice warm summer, uh, July night in Wisconsin and, you know, you might be bumped into by a few mosquitoes or gnats and, and, and that's annoying, you know, you know, that's an issue. So, you know, if you're not moving forward too terribly quickly, you know, some of those, some of those gnats will bump into you and find you, but you get behind a car and go fifty-five, your front windshield's going to find a whole lot more of them, right? And, uh, so sometimes on the, on the litigation or hearings issue, the more that your organization is doing, even if it's in a positive forward direction, the more times there's going to be some sort of issues on the windshield. And, uh, you know, we have certainly found, uh, more of those, uh, I guess including most notably, uh, you know, going to the Wisconsin Supreme Court to defend a, a city decision to use tax increment financing to move forward our downtown development that, uh, without that choice had, uh, stayed fairly static, uh, had been a blighted area for decades. And so that was a decision to, to try something, to, to make a forward decision, uh, but some individuals didn't like it and, uh, you know, it, it creates that conflict, it creates that bump. And, uh, so again, there, there's always some of that in a major, you know, in a large organization, which we certainly are, and, uh, we work on those sort of issues, but the fact that, again, we're a progressive, active city, uh, more of those are finding us lately. So what we've noticed, all of these things are, are, you know, driving workloads. Again, uh, we think, uh, in a, in a positive, uh, progressive way for our city, uh, but they're all, uh, uh, major demands on, on our time and we're stretched, uh, but that again is, is not going to be anything new, uh, from what you hear from anyone else. The, uh, uh, all that work gets done in our, our department, I have four individuals, I have two assist, I have a deputy, uh, city attorney, Doug Hofer, assistant city attorney, Vanessa Stromberg, and a paralegal legal assistant in Janine Wheelhand. Janine has functioned, uh, for a long period of time now, we downsized, uh, the time that she had available, so, uh, we function with only three-quarters of a paralegal time between three attorneys. It's not a one-to-one relationship because I don't, uh, litigate nearly as much as I did in private practice, but twenty years ago when I came to you all, um, I had two full-time staff as a private attorney and I, you know, at that point wasn't even a partner, uh, you know, I had a paralegal and a legal assistant. So, uh, the three of us share a three-quarters time person and, uh, one of the things that is in this budget is a modest increase in her staffing time, we still would move her up to full-time, uh, and we've been, uh, working, uh, under that structure now, but we couldn't continue without the budget adjustment of adding, uh, instead of having her leave at three o'clock as she otherwise did, uh, keeping her, uh, until, uh, four-thirty on Tuesdays and Wednesdays and, uh, getting that, uh, extra coverage time, especially as we're working up to, uh, council meeting time. So that is a, a slight increase in our staffing, otherwise, uh, our staffing is, well, as I say, it's been static, status quo since I came here, but actually it's, it's a quarter down since I came here. So again, I think we have trend lines that are all moving up, uh, in my experience and we're working status quo, or again, just with a little less time, uh, from our legal assistant. And in terms of other options, I mean, those things are going to bump into us whether we want to or not. So when they come and we have, I mean, currently have a, a high number of issues in litigation, uh, we have to deal with those issues, those are musts for us, as much as you would like us to respond, uh, to your issues or, uh, issues from the different department heads or employees, I mean, we have to deal with the litigation issues, uh, that our community is dealing with. And if we don't have the time to do them in-house, uh, we're going to have to, and we already do have to, and, uh, there's no way we can keep them all in-house, but we would have to, uh, move more of them out-house. And, uh, we certainly do that when we think we don't have enough expertise or time to deal with them in a high, excellent, uh, way, which, you know, our city deserves, um, but I think we have to move more of those and generally you're going to find that that will be at a much higher cost. I mean, even when we get favorable municipal outside legal rates, uh, you know, you're over two hundred dollars for sure and certainly beginning, uh, legal, hourly billable times more typically are in the mid-three hundreds, uh, so that adds up very quickly. So those, you know, that, uh, that and/or delayed, uh, response times to issues that are not mandatory critical, um, are, are some of the issues, uh, that we see, um, in terms of effects of just, um, that sort of activity and, um, you know, the potential, I mean, again, the change that we're asking for is very minor, it's not going to completely address that by any means, but those are some of the, the issues we're facing without additional resources.
Any questions for Steve? No cross-examination, just...
That's right. We'll try and keep the windshield wipers going as fast as we can.
Do you work pro bono if we need you?
All right. So we, uh, have now gone the, uh, the full hour and a half, I think we'll, we'll call it there tonight, um, that being next Tuesday at five o'clock, um, and we've got three big departments to take on, then the community services and, um, police department and the fire department, and I think we will be able to, to get all three of those into an hour and a half next week, Friday. And again, on the issues from an earlier conversation, we'll get something out with, uh, with a, a work session related to amendments, uh, which is going to be going to work out for, for July. Thank you very much for your time and your attention tonight and, um, good rest of your day. your day.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the city of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call 715-839-4912, or TDD 715-839-1689, or write Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box 5148, Eau Claire, Wisconsin 54702-5148. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org.